One minute.
About fifteen seconds.
Can't start two seconds before.
No, no.
It is eight o'clock. Let's stand and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unreguished, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anybody have any public discussion? Then we will go to approval of the agenda minutes dated July thirty first, twenty twenty-three, and August first, twenty twenty-three.
I move to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous.
Just one of those days.
Roadforeman Arne Inyers will go right to the Health Center monthly report.
Sure, a couple of things that we'd like to highlight today. Good morning.
Good morning.
We're working on physician recruitment and most notably a surgeon to come in and partner up with Dr. Cendalian and then assistants, you know, over time as Dr. Cendalian transitions out of his practice here in Elgona. So at this point, he's telling us that's probably a couple of years. And so as we look at surgeon recruitment, we have a recruitment firm who'll be coming into town on this week Thursday. And they'll be meeting with our staff and our physicians and as well as those at Hancock County Health System in Breath. So as you may or may not be aware, Dr. Cendalian routinely provides services in Elgona and at Hancock County in Breath. So we'll be looking for somebody to partner up with him and eventually replace his practice with a new surgeon. So we have that recruitment firm coming in this week. That'll be good. Physician communication, we just recently received notification that Kusuth Regional Health Center physicians have scored in the top ten percent nationally for physician communication. And that's based on patient perspective or patient satisfaction surveys. That's a really big deal. That's a big, big deal. So we're really proud of our physicians and we'll find a way to celebrate with them in the near future here. So we recognize that. There were twenty-one hospitals in Iowa who ranked at that level. So when you think about the top ten percent nationally or with twenty-one in Iowa, that means we have good health care in Iowa. That's a good thing. It's a great thing. A new chief operating officer has been hired at Mercy One North Iowa in this city. So following Rush Slater's retirement this summer, they have a new chief operating officer. His name is Chad Boar and I think he's just getting started with his orientation. So that's a name that you maybe will be seeing around here in the future. And our Senior Life Solutions Program is up in operation. And that's seen patients already. And I know that's such an important thing for, you know, anything mental health related. It's just really hard to go here in Elgona itself. There'll be a good addition of resources already here. What questions do you have of us?
Your statistics look pretty good yet.
The stats are good.
Yep.
You know, they really are. We actually closed the year strong. We're a little over ten percent operational income minus the non-cash IFRS adjustment. Those are unaudited, of course, but that's about what we're looking. So that's a really good problem they have right now. Actually, I just recently read an article that there are seven rural hospitals right here in Iowa that are at risk of closure. And not to say that seven hospitals will close, but they're at risk. And risk is defined as having loss from operations for multiple years. So successive years in row, little or no resources. And they have more debt than they have assets. So we're in a positive position. We're very fortunate for that. So.
Any more questions? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Happy summer and have a good day.
Good too.
Summer's about over.
I know that's.
Stay fair.
Every moment, every moment.
Yeah, stay fair. Summer's gone.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
What is the roadforeman? We got any new things going on?
Got a little boy trying to do some blading.
Got a nice rain.
Yeah, I did. We got a pretty good rain. I made it buried a lot of places, but I've got to get it in. Back to start, I used to say something, we're too wet. So just moved the other end of the territory, you know.
Did you guys get two inches of water?
Yeah, two, maybe a little too much stuff, but I think farther north, you got a little more than that.
Did you think closer to Sway City was in the neighborhood of three?
Looks like they said a little over four up there north of Sway City.
Yeah.
Would you get way down south?
Just an inch, but it was nice. Very lonely, dude, huh?
Yeah.
Scott, did you have a chance to look at the Johnny Wagner's road there?
Yeah. What happened there was the mower had just went down it and when he bladed it, there was a lot of the grass that the mower throws up. So we re-bladed it, yeah. It's good now.
Yep. Alright, that's about it.
Blacktop patching looked good.
What's that?
Blacktop patching looked good.
The bridge didn't end up very good.
Didn't it?
But we'll be, I'll talk a little bit about that with my discussion too.
Are they coming back again?
Yes, yes. But other, the other roads, yes, they turned out alright. They still have some work to do.
Anything else for the foreman? Don't thank you guys. Roger, you got a new hire.
Good morning. Yes, we do. Come on over, Russ. I hope you have a copy of this one. I'll give you the one with his name.
Well, that's really.
Yeah, I wrote it down either way.
Perfect, perfect. So this is, let me introduce you first. This is Wes Gibbs. He's our newest hire Deputy Sheriff. Wes is from Bancroft. His wife is with us here this morning for the ceremony. And Wes is, was a North Union school teacher for eleven years?
Uh, ten years.
Ten years.
I taught in Taitanka and then he was up.
In North Union. And he's one of our applications and ended up being our finalist. And we've got him enrolled in the academy first week of January. So I'll let you take it over.
We will swear you in.
Alright.
Repeat after me. I, Wes Gibbs, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of Deputy Sheriff in Kusuth, County of Kusuth, as now or hereafter is required by law.
I, Wes Gibbs, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and partially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of Deputy Sheriff in the County of Kusuth, as now or hereafter is required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You are now sworn in.
Congratulations. You can.
I just got to sign this.
Yep.
Oh, he's got to do things.
Oh, yes.
Wes has signed this line and Tammy over it.
It don't work this time on that board.
Both copies, Wes.
One for Tammy.
One for daughter and one for me.
What's your wife think of all of this?
Oh, she loves it.
Ask her again in a year.
Okay.
He was in Army when I met him.
She's used to it.
Well, at least this way, even when I'm working, it's still remotely close as opposed to being away from me.
Yeah, here the time is a bit much, but. Our kids aren't babies.
Now you're up to full staff, huh?
Yes, we're full staff and then we're hoping to get started with the courthouse security position once Derek gives me the okay that they're good to go upstairs, get all the locks installed and all that. Kind of tentative planning on October, but we won't put him out on his own until after the academy transfers.
Did you tell him he's gonna be in the courthouse upstairs all?
Well, no.
Yeah, don't deny it.
Not yet. Although we do have a trial starting today, so you'll see a couple of us over here today. One of our inmates has trial starts today, so.
It's just like watching a lot of the right.
Yeah.
Just like.
You know, you gotta get along with Bailey, don't you?
Well, it's just like the Army. You gotta meet the people that you have to make sure they're here. Stay on the good side.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
We are up to discussion decision on supplemental insurance option from Global Life and Family Heritage.
Morning, guys. How are you?
Good morning.
You're back. I'm back, yay. Who wants to talk insurance? No. Do you guys have any questions for me then, or? Anybody?
No. Explained it pretty well last time.
Yeah. It's, where are the next steps, I guess, then?
Well, I would entertain a motion to accept or deny.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
This is providing an option for employees, not replacing anything.
Right, right.
Yep.
I'd, I'd make a motion to accept it and add it to the options that we give employees.
Second to that motion?
I'll second.
Discussion. Free quiet, morning.
For me, when I come in, so I would, when I typically do counties, is I get the department head list of each, right? And it's usually a five-minute kind of like this, hey, this is who I am, this is what I do. Hang out in break room. If people are interested, great. If not, I follow up with them off the clock as well if they want. So they have them options, but like you said, yeah, it's not to replace anything. It's just another supplemental and also do a whole life program as well. And then a wellness program. Some people that are really like the wellness programs, just for the fact that it puts more money in your guys' pocket. It saves the employer. And it's really the only way we're gonna make health insurance cheaper is by getting us to go for all the preventatives we don't wanna do. So.
If, if you wouldn't mind, if you can go to the auditor's office and ask for Melissa.
Okay.
She has our payroll and Donna Nelson does our HR. If you can give your information to Melissa and get, she can get, tell her that you were just here and the board approved this as an option and she can get the information that she needs from you. Contact information, whatever.
Perfect. Okay, and she's just heard. Melissa?
Yeah, at the end of the hall on the left hand side.
Cool.
So, yep.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
We're still got.
You, you wanna hear a little bit of that?
What's that? Sorry.
Yeah, 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 we still got a boat. Yeah, we still got a boat.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
We are up to liquor license for Columbia Hall Association of Elgona, Iowa. Jack moves to approve. Seconded by Carter. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried unanimous.
Failure of next.
Morning.
Yeah, morning, morning. You think you needed a chassis before you could get an ambulance?
I'll remember back when we approved that, when we made the decision to continue with purchasing that ambulance rather than waiting to next fiscal year, because of the chassis and not being able to to, to lock in the price if we waited. So this is just the, I don't like the wording on it because we're actually buying a chassis. As you can see on the invoice, there's actually a VIN number on the invoice. So we're actually buying a chassis. We don't have the chassis because when they, when they sign the chassis to us, over to us, when the ambulance is built, that's when the warranty begins. So even though we're buying the chassis today, the warranty does not start until we have a completed ambulance. But we're actually buying the chassis versus, it says on the invoice prepayment of chassis. So their prepayment and what we look at, prepayment's got two different things. We're prepaying a person when the ambulance is delivered, but we're actually paying the chassis that's going to be sitting at the factory.
Technically, we're not supposed to pay for things we don't have. So it could be an audit issue.
Mm-hmm.
And do you have enough money in that account?
We'll have to, when we do the budget amendment, transfer that or the money that was designated towards the vehicle.
Okay.
Do we wanna call Elizabeth to double check on this? Cause I mean, the situation here is complex and from my conversations with her, I I know it's not the prepaying for things, like you said, I know she has mentioned, but there's, there's been a lot of changes with COVID that she also talked about and knowing that we'll actually own the chassis, I don't know that that would be an issue from what I've heard, but.
They guys, they won't let you order it and then pay as it comes in, kind of like ordering motor grader juice.
No, the idea of getting that price locked in was, we had those four options back when we approved this. I don't know which month we had this on the agenda, but we had the four options of how to proceed with chassis. I think we called her at that time that we got.
Yeah.
Didn't she say with, with COVID, it was.
I'm ninety-nine percent sure I called her at that point in time.
So technically, you're taking possession of it?
Technically, yes.
The dealership would have.
Not, not the county.
Not the county. We would, we would.
They'll have a new possession, but we're gonna own it. It's just gonna be parked there. So if that business would close or if that factory would close.
We still own the chassis.
We still own the chassis. It's ours. We have a VIN number. That's our chassis. We bought it. It's just delayed delivery to have the warranty begin, but we actually have a completed ambulance.
So upon approval of this, it's not necessarily a prepayment of chassis. It is a payment for a chassis. It's just being stored in another location. Is that correct?
Yeah, and.
This isn't a normal way of doing things, but with COVID and the availability of having, to get chassis.
Yeah.
This is how we made this work.
Yeah.
Are they ever gonna catch up? Probably not, to be honest. I mean, there's.
Well, there's, there's a lot of things that are only going to be produced as ordered now. I think that's kind of just a change of what we went through.
Normally, we don't pay for anything until we take possession of it.
But I don't think we have another option.
I don't know that we ever did this too far.
What would be, what would be the auditing concerns?
We can't prepay for anything.
So being, being in this, would be county property stored in a location, does that fit in there to be a different scenario or is that?
I don't know.
The way I look at it is if we owned a truck as a county and then we had to have that truck worked on and it sits on another lot.
But we've already taken, we've already taken title to that truck. So that would be a different situation.
So we wouldn't get title for this truck, for this chassis?
Correct.
You wouldn't get title?
We would not get title to this until we, it would be delivered.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
There's my next.
So then we really wouldn't own it until it's stored. I mean, we have rights to it, but.
No reason to tie it to latest for warranty purposes.
Sure.
We still own the chassis.
Would it be prudent to check with Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Try to, um, just making sure that we do go about it the right way.
That's my opinion.
I can see where Phil's coming from here, you know, maybe it's.
We can try to get a hold of her close contact till maybe later in the meeting, see if she calls us back.
I mean, would that be okay?
Yeah, I, I called and texted her, so hopefully she gets back soon.
That way we are back.
We'll put a hold on that for a little bit. You have an agenda item here to hire a full-time EMT?
Yeah, we followed the hiring processes and we did make an offer and she has accepted the offer. I was speaking with a householder. She's a local Elgona metropolitan area person. I invited her to come. I just wanted to see if she was here. She has an EMT. She was in paramedic school. So eventually we will, she will be a paramedic and she's local, so hopefully we can retain her for quite some time.
She's currently in paramedic school?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Where is she an EMT now?
She used to work in hospital. She got her EMT. She's been working over in Palo Alto County with intention of coming back here when we opened up hiring again.
Sure, sure.
So. She had worked in Kusuth Regional here, so she does have ties there. Experience there, experience as an EMT.
Full, full staff, mm?
Two more.
Two more?
I'd make a motion to approve hiring Caitlin Householder.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. We are up to discussions regarding budget workshop recording.
Yes, I don't, I don't know if anyone in particular wants to start here. I remember when we were getting towards the end of our budget workshops this last season. It had been brought up, I think, to a couple of us about recording the budget workshops and and they hadn't been in, they hadn't been recorded like our regular meetings were and stuff. So we had talked about putting it back on the agenda.
I remember. I don't think we should be recorded because it might, might force us to go into closed session during every budget workshop.
You're right.
Because we're talking about wages and benefits of individuals and they have a right to go into closed session. We might have to call people in here during budget workshops and ask if they wanna go, if they want closed session or to put it out to the individuals who have, can come in and ask for closed session.
That's only if they're.
We're talking about wages and benefits. That's what budget workshops are. And person, and, and people. People, personnel, wages, benefits, that's what.
Twenty-one point five subsection I is to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual represent, or requests a closed session.
We also go into closed session during negotiations, union negotiations.
Union negotiations is exempt from public meetings.
Budget workshops are not regular meetings. It's our, it's, if somebody wants to come in, yeah, they can come in to, to, I just, I don't see why we have to record those.
We did bring this up at our department head meeting last week. And I'm not gonna speak for all department heads, but there were some concerns about going into recording the meetings due to me, for example, when I meet with the board during my budget, I'd like to be able to be open and free to talk about any concerns I have in my office or budgetary issues. And I think recording it might put a stigma. I might not feel free to say some of the things that I wouldn't. Not that I'm hiding anything or it's just, you know, sometimes just being open and free, you know, with the board is easier when you're not.
There are delicate matters that are discussed sometimes.
I just don't, yeah, I just don't say everything.
Nick, you got an opinion?
I, I do agree with Tammy and, and Jack. And I know at our department head meeting the other day, there were other department head people in here and most of them shared that same feeling.
I, I'll make a motion and I can do that in the course of budget workshops.
Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Carter, discussion. Not to record?
It's already that way.
We really don't.
But if you want. I, I want it, I want it, I want it so that it doesn't come up again. Cause otherwise, too often things just get put on week after week after week.
Any more discussion?
I guess my thoughts is I can see benefits of, you know, being recorded because it is county business, but I can also see where the department heads would have issues with, you know, openly discussing different things. Kind of makes it difficult to actually make the, you know, decision to actually do it or not.
I guess, go ahead.
I was just saying, maybe if a pub, if a public member, I did have, okay, two different individuals reach out to me and asked them about this, you know, at the time, but maybe if we were a little, I know it's hard to say sometimes, but list on our posting, here are the departments we're gonna be, which I think, do, do we do that? Okay, so.
I, we try to.
So then, I mean, a public member could say, okay, at approximately this time, and they can always reach out to us or to the auditor's office and if they wanna sit in on any of the budget workshops, it is open to the public, yeah. And we did have someone come sit in. Yep, yep, we did. Really this year on it, so I mean, it's not out of the question that whether people can come in and sit in or not.
I guess my perspective on it, I, I understand the concerns and potential hesitation that way, but it is an open meeting either way, since it is an agenda. Potential hesitation that way, but it is an open meeting either way, um, since it is an agenda item. For those things, um. I, I struggle drawing a line between why we'd record one and not the other, um.
Cause one's a workshop, the other's a regular thing.
But even those conversations in the workshop that you're talking about that are potentially, um, more sensitive topics. We can have conversations with the department heads individually, any day of the week. I mean, I could talk to Tammy five days a week, that's not a board meeting, um, so I feel like if there is specific, yeah. I feel like if there is specific things that need to be addressed during that. Couple month period that we're doing budget workshops, I feel that's easy to accomplish in other ways as well. Um, and considering the budget's primary responsibility of the board supervisors, I think public should have access to that. Cause most people aren't gonna be able to take off their job to come in and watch a budget workshop.
Any more discussion? Do a roll call vote.
Plack.
Yes.
Nat.
Yes.
Whacter.
Pass.
Stacker.
No.
Jerks.
I'll pass.
Whacter.
No.
Jerks.
Make it harder on me. I'll say yes. Motion carried three to two. I do think there could be a slight bit of a compromise on this, that we recorded some of it. But when you talk about wages and personnel, I think it should be shut off.
That's probably what I'm gonna ask him, there was a way to separate those two, I mean, majority of what we talked about is. Other budget line items.
Right.
That don't have any, have anything to do with personnel issues or, I mean, wages.
Yeah. So in the end, I, I think we couldn't really. Do a compromise and I, I'd like to keep it legal, you start talking about wages. Yeah, it shouldn't be on the camera, cause then anybody can say what they think.
It is legal, there's no law that says you have to record it, you have to keep that, that's it.
But it is, we should be as transparent as we can do, so.
Yeah.
It's, so in a future date. If, if we have some, if we have an idea of how we want to go about doing that, so that it does post smoothly. Rather than open meeting, closed session, open meeting, closed session, then. We make an amendment to that motion, then to. Include that parts of meetings will be recorded, parts will not, I mean.
Let's do something.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. If that's the will, you know, of the public and department heads too.
Not called. Thanks for coming in, Nick.
You bet, thank you.
We are up to, um, landfill and transfer station, if you're aiding them up.
You want to give me a call then, or?
Yeah. We won't waste your time. We'll call you.
Cause I, I, I can go back and look back from that other meeting because we had this conversation when we approved the purchase at that time, so.
I just, it, it's.
Is available by any chance?
It's how they have to do business, cause they can't work on the chassis until the chassis is.
Okay, no worries.
Bought and paid for, they, so they can't build that chassis out for our ambulance without us paying for it.
Yeah.
But at the same time, if we can't prepay, it's kind of.
We'll find something out today.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I'll turn like this and just start rolling away.
It's, it's if you get out of the little spot where you were sitting in.
Mm-hmm.
Then, then you get up where it's not.
The wheels are finding them around and they'll just kinda rest there, but you get out of that room and you just start rolling away.
Yeah.
You're a goner.
Yep. Or if you sit down too quick, you never can feet that way. Did you guys all make it out to the fair?
No, I had a permanent, permanent rest in the bathroom for.
Oh.
Three days. It was a good spot.
I went every single day.
Did you?
Every single day.
I made it on Saturday, why don't you go back to the fair?
There, Tuesday for the parade and then my son does the pedal pole.
Okay.
Got third place this year, so we need to go to state again.
And actually.
Good morning.
Good morning, guys.
State is, uh. Second.
Oh, oh, okay, so it's not state.
No, no, state pedal pole.
Gotcha.
I forgot. Yeah, no problem. So they have that at a different time than the state fair?
Yeah. Cause I think they get competitors down at the state fair that will do, and then, um, they take the top three finishers from. Each age class and, and then they go compete at the state pedal pole competition.
Where is that at?
Over in Mason City.
Oh, yeah, we always have pedal pole at the room days and they qual, they qualify for state fair.
Yeah, this is second year in a row that he qualified for state.
Okay.
Last year he got first in his age group.
Okay.
No, we had to hit the Catholic same a few times, but.
No.
Chicken biscuits. Doesn't matter how hot it is, hot chicken and biscuits. Both the.
Yeah, forgot something.
The, uh. Frowing sows had their babies at the fair, so I can see a bunch of baby pigs there.
Cool.
Yeah.
That's cute.
I was through there, but I didn't look that close.
That's Caitlin's favorite mark, she could save the donkey, probably should have. Good morning.
Morning, Doug.
Good morning, Doug.
We are up to the landfill, Doug.
Yeah, um. I received, the board as well, uh, received notification that the current manager Dustin Hanson resigned. So I would recommend that the board would appoint, uh, Blake Stevens as the new manager. Of the Kasut County Transfer Station. You bet.
I would make a motion to table this agenda item till next week, um, and. Reason for that is the exit interview that was conducted last week, I believe the board should have, we should have a conversation about some things that. Happened there and were said there, and I think we probably need a specific agenda item and possibly closed session to do that. And have that conversation.
Need a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Um, for that exit interview, I was the only one from the board physically present, Carter joined by phone, so I feel. The other three of you should be aware of information from that.
Proved to do so, I think, regardless of, nothing against Blake or anybody, you know, just. We managed to have a conversation, so. Just in regards to the transfer station.
I don't see any reason why we can't move forward with, with the, uh, appointment, has nothing to do with, with the appointment. That's, that's beside the point, whatever app, whatever the information, not gonna change the appointment. So I don't see any reason why we have to take a listen.
Any more discussion? Have a motion and a second on the floor? Do a roll call vote on the motion?
Plack.
No.
Nat.
Yes.
Whacter.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Jerks.
No. Motion carried.
So any agenda for next week, do you want it in closed session?
Um, this item would be after another one, I'll talk to you on that afterwards.
Okay.
So we do not have a manager of the transfer station now, I guess, uh, what are your feelings as far as. Making some of the day-to-day, uh, decisions that need to be made up there? Who would you like to do that, may I ask?
What is, what is your, what is your plan for the transfer station?
Is it to change? I mean, we've always had a manager there.
Close it.
Well, if you guys wanna close it, then.
If you guys don't, if you guys don't want a manager, there's, let's just close it for a week.
We can tell them to just repall to central disposal there today.
I mean, this is, this is, this is, this is the, the thing that people in the county come to all the time about is how. Efficient is more of this because we can't make a simple decision like appointing a manager, it has nothing to do with appointing another manager to landfill. Cause, cause exit interview means, I think it does. That's, that's, that's an employee that left, he was disrun or whatever, so he left, it wasn't, it doesn't change the fact we need a manager up there. So I say we close the landfill for a week. There's nobody up there to run it, so Doug can't go up there and sit for a week.
What's, what's been the operation since our past manager's been gone?
I worked Friday all day up there and Blake worked yesterday with a secondary road employee. Today a secondary road employee is up there and Blake is up there. And if I have to, I will run up there again, which I think it's Friday for sure. It might be sooner, but again, um, the Kasut Waste Management Association, um. They. That, that is. The, the transfer station and landfill are owned by Kasut County. The Kasut Waste Management Association is, is an association that runs the. Runs the, it's a twenty-eighty agreement, Kasut County is part of it. Uh, I, you know, I don't know, I guess, um, but. I would reiterate, I don't know what an exit interview, uh, unless something was brought up about Blake, I guess, I think that's what it is. But I can't see, and I, I had the opportunity to work with Blake, I. I know Blake and I have all the confidence in the world that he can be a manager. So, and I, I'm. I, I talked with Blake about it and my hope was that this would be taken care of today, but if you guys have other ideas. The sooner you would allow me to know about what is going on with. The Kasut County Transfer Station, Kasut County Landfill, uh, the better. I also am looking at consultants for the Kasut County Transfer Station and landfill, if you guys have. Other things that you want to do with that, you're more than welcome to do that, I will continue to do that if you would like, but. If, if you guys wanna take over the operation of that, that's fine.
I'm gonna make a motion to close it for a week, cause we don't have anybody running. Cause our board is, our board is inefficient, we can't, we can't even appoint a, a Sunday manager department, so I'm gonna make a motion to close it for a week.
Motion's out of order, not on the agenda.
Has to do with the landfill. Has to do with an appointment, we don't have a manager, so what else are we gonna do? It's, it's had, it's, it has to do with the appointment of a manager, we don't have anybody to run it, so.
If we, if we have to close it because we don't have a manager, it should have been closed since the day Dustin was gone. If you follow that same logic.
Then you should do your job and appoint a manager, um, what you're doing today is ludicrous, has nothing to do. An employee left, okay, so big deal. They, they have the right to leave, that doesn't mean we have, we have to cease doing our job and running the county, as we can't run the county efficiently if we don't. Appoint people to their, to our position. Country is a productive, go up there and sit up there for a whole day.
I'm sorry, Jack, I, Carter, you were on the phone.
Motion was made, I.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we can't do it, cause it's not on the agenda, somebody will give us.
I just wanted, didn't wanna speak out over it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was on the phone and I, there were no other board members present there, I think it's prudent that we all just have a conversation about the. Transfer station and appointing of a manager is included of, in that, as far as how, how to proceed, I think it's just important for the board to hear those comments and. As a whole, and to see more of what's, you know, what's going on up there and how we can proceed, how we can move forward with that.
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, this exit interview happened Thursday, if there was such a. Great need, I, I think this was on the agenda prior to, or I had submitted this, uh, request prior to that exit interview. Um, if you felt there was such a need, why didn't you just go ahead and put it on the agenda for today?
Exactly, I, that was too late to get it on the agenda by the time.
I, I guess, was it asked, did anyone ask Tammy if it could have been put on, I'll ask that question.
I, I didn't think about this until Saturday.
Uh, it's fine.
My original.
We will get it taken care of, we will make sure that it operates.
My original question to anybody that was there, was Hanson discussed at the exit interview?
Blake, Blake Stevens?
No, Dustin Hanson.
Dustin was the employee that left.
I'm sorry, Blake. Stevens, was he discussed?
Yes, he was mentioned in the exit interview.
Dirigatory or positive?
I don't think we can discuss that in real session. I mean. That's, that's a point of twenty-one five.
Had the entire board been there, I think.
Well, then your motion should have been not to appoint them as a manager if, if there's a problem, not to, not to, to, uh.
Table.
Table, you should, you should have made a motion to not appoint him as a manager.
I, I actually think the motion was out of order because it's currently on our iPad, it has to appoint Blake Stevens as manager.
I, my motion or Jack's motion?
Both.
My motion wasn't ordered. My motion wasn't ordered, I will challenge that.
Or the motion should have, it should have been a decision to approve or disapprove. You didn't, you didn't do either.
Blake is there now, I mean at what the difference between him being there now and having the title of manager, he's still one employee that are doing the same job. So is there, is this going to cause conflict at the transfer station for tailing for a week?
Well, I was hoping to interview people to work at the transfer station, if Blake is not gonna be appointed manager, it would be a whole different job description, a whole different attitude.
Aren't, aren't we, aren't we working to hire an employee there anyway, another employee at the transfer station?
We, we have a different manager now, I will discuss that, well I was planning to discuss that with Blake, yes.
But I mean, could we move forward with the hiring of an employee, so?
Well, if the new manager would think that he and another person could run the operation, that would put us into a little bit of a dilemma as well.
What I'm, what I'm hearing you say is if if a manager is appointed and thinks the job can be done with two people as opposed to three, then we wouldn't have the need to hire a third person, is that right?
That is correct, okay. So it's gonna delay that for more time, which means the secondary road department will continue to cover, the engineer's office will continue to cover, um, so I mean, do you want this on the agenda next week, or do you want to discuss this and then make a decision about appointing a manager the following week? I, I don't, uh, I don't understand.
It could be on the same agenda, just an item down.
And I, I would think that the decision could be made today. So, uh, that's, uh, my opinion, I will not change, and I will not be putting an agenda item on. Because I've done my diligence.
Could we put it on the agenda for next week to have a, um, well, for one to have a closed session regarding the exit interview with the employee?
What is the closed session? What is, what's the, I guess, may I ask?
In regards to the employee-
A closed session when you're talking about employee, I believe they have to request it, they have to be present.
It, it would have to be on the agenda as a possibility of a closed session, they would have to request it in writing.
So, but if that, if that employee doesn't show up, then?
If Dustin doesn't request it, we can't have a closed session.
It's not Dustin.
Yeah, Dustin Hanson.
Blake.
That's Blake.
Why would Blake request a closed session?
So my question is if he doesn't-
Dustin is not here as an employee.
But you're talking about him. Isn't that what the exit interview?
Yeah, I guess what would be the, what would be the agenda item, may I ask?
I don't know, I'm confused.
No, I won't do it. You can't have a closed session when they're talking about employees if, if they don't come in here and request it. So then my question is, so then what are you gonna do if you're gonna, you're gonna sit on your, sit on your thumbs and you're not gonna appoint a manager again? I mean, come on, people, this is, this is ludicrous. This is how ineffective people consider us as a board because we can't make a simple decision like this.
I think actually there's two employees that would, um, I'm that, that could be discussed, um I would rather talk to Tammy after the agenda and coordinate with Todd as far as agenda language to make sure it's legal, but that's what I had said earlier.
Another question I had is if Doug's, Doug's employee, what is the due for, who appointed to the exit interview?
He scheduled it.
I was on vacation, I was on, I had vacation planned where I received the two weeks in the-
But yet you, but yet you weren't given any information about the exit interview, as, as the manager of the department had.
My, uh, you still don't have any knowledge of the exit, I do know.
The engineer's office was involved in this.
Well, like, he's his department head, like-
Well, that's because my, the office manager who was representing the secondary road department, um, she was she was not in the office yesterday, she was back today, I haven't had an opportunity to whistle with her yet. So I will be asking some questions.
I, I think this conversation is very close to the fine line of things that should be discussed in closed session.
What, I guess, we're talking about an exit interview, are you-
No, he, he's talking for next week. This, the stuff that we would be discussing in the next week, agenda item would be along the lines of the closed session. Not what we're discussing.
Well, we're not getting further-
So Mr. Stucker or-
Can we communicate with Doug in the coming week as far as and as he, as he hears from the office and what, what they found in the interview, and can we communicate with him this week and then in the next couple of days put an agenda item on if necessary? And, and it will be necessary to put appointment of a manager to the transfer station on the agenda for next week. So please, you know, leave that on there, but, um, whether any other whether any other agenda item is necessary, or, um, maybe let's, let's just communicate with-
I would certainly hope that any board member that would have any kind of a any information brought to them about any department head, any elected official, I would assume that any board member would try to find out the whole story. A detective that would rely on one person's
That's why we don't-
One, no, if you allow me, one person's testimony and make charges against that person, I would say is not a very good detective. Again, the board has responsibilities, no matter what you're looking at. When we built a new transfer station, the board of supervisors at that time made a big decision to close the landfill. And at that time, there was a lot of people that thought they were making a wrong decision, but they studied the issue, they studied it wholeheartedly. Six months worth of study, getting both sides of the story. Again, relying on one person's testimony and then not even being able to appoint a manager because of testimony. And I, I, I hope that again, I put this on the agenda, I don't know, was it Wednesday morning, Tammy?
You could have been.
Thursday morning? It was prior to any kind of exit interview. And when the, when the agenda item come out, I think it was pretty clear what was discussed in that agenda item. And not to I guess, have concerns or make a phone call. That, I, I don't know. That seems strange. But again, I would recommend that Blake Stevens be appointed at the transfer station.
And that is on the agenda for next week then? Tammy?
Yeah, I'll make sure that that is one item for next week.
Okay, we'll move to next agenda item. Carter, your name's on it, changes to the engineer's contract?
I would make a motion to amend the Kasut County Engineer's Contract in Section ten, Letter A, third line, by replacing the word unanimous with the word majority.
You made that as a motion?
I did. I'll second, let's go.
I have a motion and a second, discussion?
Uh, I don't think this is the time to be talking about this, it's, uh, it should be done at, at the appropriate time. In the middle of the start of budget year, and I, I got stuck. I don't think this should be taken up at this time.
Section eleven says that this contract may be amended, revised, renewed, or extended at any time, only by written approval of the board and the engineer.
And the engineer?
Correct.
Did he, did he, did he approve it?
Well, the board hasn't approved it, and we're going to respond.
I thought you, I thought that you said it had, was revising the contract on board approval and engineer's approval. You had, I guess, a pretty damn thing.
So we have to make the approval before it goes to him? It has to be approved on both sides, and we're-
Okay, go ahead.
So, the contract ends two years and eight months to know?
As it stands.
This is a proposition to amend it-
This is just a change of language.
This is a proposition to amend it now, rather than at the potential new contract though, right?
Correct.
And that was, that was all in the email you sent, what, two weeks ago?
Couple weeks ago. I believe we all should have heard that.
Any more discussion? Do a roll call vote?
Is it okay if I repeat the motion first?
Yes.
Okay, um, motion by Nat, second by Whacker, to revise the engineer's contract in Section ten A by replacing the word unanimous to the word majority. Do you want an effective time on that?
Well, I did-
Are, are you saying revise or amend? I don't know if there's any material difference there.
There isn't.
Do you have a preference?
It, it kind of falls on the both sides.
Yeah.
Amend is fine.
Okay.
Go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Did, did we get an effective date or not, or?
Well, you, you can't do it until the contract that he now has is up. So this contract wouldn't take hold until the old one expired.
No, it just has to be approved by the engineer, has to be accepted.
Correct, it could be revised and changed at any time. It just has to be from written approval from both parties.
Okay. Stan's corrected when you're-
This is our written, written
Yeah.
Approval of the board, it's all that says.
So you can't put an effective date on it until we know if Doug accepts it or not?
Correct.
Am I correct on that?
Yeah, we, yeah, we-
Do, do you want a timeline to have a response back by?
No. No. Actually, what you're doing is presenting Doug a contract to amend, amended contract
That would be-
For him to accept, that's, should be your motion.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good point, I agree.
That, that really should be your motion.
Per, per acceptance of the Kasut County Engineer.
We're, we're, he's presenting-
But if there's, if there's no, yes, or no in a certain timeframe, we should have some sort of-
Well, then it's rejected.
I mean, it's rejected until approved, really, I mean, yeah.
Until he says something, yes or no, it's rejected.
Yeah.
Okay, let me do a roll call vote.
Yep.
Plack?
I have not voted on this issue.
Nat?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Jerks?
No.
If you can record it, then three, one vote, I'm not voting on this issue, this is the thing that matters.
So is that abstained?
Yeah, abstained. We are up to construction in the right of way.
Uh, Burt Titanka Communications, they requested that, uh, they requested work in the road right of way to install fiber optic cable through the new, uh, confinement operation, this would be on two hundred and eightieth street in between Sections thirty-four of Burt and Section three of Union, I would recommend that the board would approve of this.
I would move to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carter, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, unanimous. Thank you, we are up to discussion with the county engineer and zoning administrator.
Uh, the Woodland Hills work last two weeks ago when we, we met. We did do some excavation, we did not find any broken drainage structures. Why that was settling, we don't know, but we filled everything back in, compacted it all really well, and we will be putting a patch over that soon. Uh, resurfacing projects, the contractor has moved into Kasut County. Uh, the plant is operating today, they are doing some of their patching that is required, and resurfacing will begin tomorrow. The federal funded bridge south of Titanka, uh, they have the piling for the south substructures. Excuse me, the piers, pier and apartment are in, and they are planning on pouring some concrete, uh, either tomorrow or Thursday. Uh, patching on the Irvington Bridge was about a week ago, it did not go very well, they need to get more mix in there, we've already contacted Blacktop Service, and they are planning the end of this week to complete that.
On, on that, Doug, is that something they'll be tearing stuff out or milling stuff down, going over it, or just going over the top?
They will need to mill, and then they'll be putting more asphalt in.
Okay.
And they should put more asphalt in to begin with, we will have expense for the asphalt. Um, but the milling will not be charged.
Okay, I was just curious.
Uh, stockpiling sections is happening up by the, um, Seneca Gun Club. Uh, the contractor, we are supposed to have a pre-construction conference this, the end of this week, I think it's Friday, might have been Thursday. Um, but they will be starting that work next week. The Algonquin Airport expansion is supposed to begin at any time, I am waiting for some emails to have a little bit uh, more, uh, report on that, more specifics. I'm working on the secondary road annual report. Uh, I think I spoke about these two trucks two weeks ago, but we have a blade that is down, uh, diesel fuel in the oil. Uh, we believe it's injectors, it might be a head gasket, um, they're going to start working on that. And we've got a mechanic shop service pickup is down. And right now, we have four posi, or four positions that I'm, uh, looking to get replacements on. Uh, and then also consultant change at the Waste Management Association, um, I hope to bring that to the board for, uh, approval, so we can get those, get the new consultant working on that next week. And then we have, uh, end of self-insurance, end of year reports, I have, uh, got a claim in for next week, but we should be pretty much finished up with the end of fiscal year reports for self-insurance.
Anything else for Doug?
Over by, uh, one ninety, whatever happened with, uh, with, uh, Brian Borman?
Well, Brian Borman cut down a bunch of trees along a waterway, um, he had visited a little bit with our road forming. Um, my understanding was that he was gonna hire a contractor to come in and do some shaping on that ditch. And when the contractor moves in there, we were gonna ask if we brought some- And when the contractor moves in there, we were going to ask if we brought some riprap for the road right of way if he would place it for us. But that contractor, to my knowledge, has not moved in. But there was some trees in the road right of way that were taken out and we will certainly protect the road right of way.
Oh, per discussion regarding weeds, is that the giant radish was not listed as a noxious weed?
I don't believe it, yeah.
What what do we spray for, just so I know as far as what?
There is a list of noxious weeds in the coal or the state. I'll email that to you.
Okay, oh yeah, I appreciate that. I did drive up. I was reached out to me again by Tony saying I did drive up there again this morning on my way to meeting. And there is some giant radish weed just to the west of his house. There's a whole bunch along the field on the on the south side of the ditch there.
On the back slope?
On the back slope.
Yeah, those are when when agriculture producers or when whoever spraying their fields and they decide to spray a couple of extra feet into the road ditch and.
Kills the grass.
And it kills the grass. That's what happens and it's hard to chase that one.
Yeah. But that's what I had previously mentioned, is along there, it's like going south on the extra gravel.
I may be a W aware of that, requested that they.
Oh, very good.
Anything else for Doug?
I guess in in regards to the changes and amendment that was made by the board. Do you have any thoughts on that? Are you willing to accept it or do you have an idea of when you'll get back to us?
I have you're talking specifically about what changes in amendment.
The changes that we just voted on.
I've been advised not to come in.
If nothing else, we are up to discussion with our county auditor.
Thank you, Doug.
Have a good day.
You too.
Next week. Let's see, we have regular claims week, veterans affairs, approve our annual urban renewal report that we do every year. That's for active projects. And then claims, yeah, review of the first part of Kusuth County Handbook. Donna and I, we're going to decide how much of that to present to you, but um we'll get that off to you here shortly, so you have plenty of time to look at it before Tuesday's meeting. Construction of the road right of way and then both Mr. Minky and Mr. Goshi had asked to be on the agenda to talk about drainage assessments. Mr. Goshi did fill out an agenda request and is asking to be on to talk about the assessment and conditions of the various outlets of D four, let two, let four, let eleven, and let twenty eight.
Which which Joe Goshi did?
Yes.
Um, what were the laterals that were listed there? Let two.
Let two, four, eleven, and twenty eight.
I think a discussion on lateral two and lateral four would be premature since we have public hearings scheduled for them. I I don't think we should have a one-on-one conversation on that when we have hearings that are actively scheduled.
I usually don't turn down agenda requests or you tell me to turn.
He he can come in, but you can advise him that the discussion will probably not be done until we have a public hearing date set and.
I mean, I just just my two cents.
I don't I don't disagree with you, but.
I don't know why we would hash it out with one member of the district for X amount of time and then go back and repeat and have a public hearing in a few more days.
I don't disagree with you, but I I think we're going to have to do that at the meeting.
Yeah, we can we can do that at the agenda time.
He also said he wants to discuss the results of Mr. Spector's special session that occurred on August first. And they will be putting together a program. So, that's it for what's happening next week. And let's see on the calendar. I don't think you guys have much going on in the next week or so. And I don't think that I have anything else. I do not.
Committee reports. Jack, vacation was good?
Good, yeah, good time.
Carter, vacation was good?
It was it was fine, too.
Josh, how was your vacation?
The fair was good. Um, I got tomorrow, we are doing our round one for the hazard mitigation plan with the commission. So, that'll be pretty interesting going through the plan with fine tooth comb and finding areas for improvement and things like that, so.
Connor?
I don't think I have any board reports. My my vacation or lack thereof was exciting.
I didn't have anything last week except I got to talk to Carter after the meeting a little bit about a drainage issuing in the district.
Okay.
And we have to go back to the chassis.
Oh, yeah, I almost forgot about that.
I had I had gotten a text from Elizabeth that she was in a meeting and she can't call me. But that was forty minutes ago. I tried to text her, but she hasn't again, but she hasn't responded, so. I don't know what we want to do there.
Is it going to change the price to table it a week? I mean, as far as.
Well, that that could be the problem because um I mean, I don't know if it's the case with this one, but there there may be a deadline on accepting the what, you know, they're offering for the price. Yeah, Phil might know that and if we don't make a decision on it and, you know, pay it.
But jeopardize with the chassis.
Yeah, are they going to move on to the next?
Well, are they going to start doing it too?
Right.
Well, yeah, and that's in the email. The option that we chose was pay for the chassis that you can purchase upfront and build it right away at Lifeline for completion later this year, so. If we don't purchase the chassis, I do think it would affect that. I don't know how much other information was in this email off the top of my head.
Should we get Phil on the phone and just kind of pose that question to him and?
Because if it's okay to wait a week, then let's wait a week and audit him.
Yeah.
Or opinion on that.
Hey, it's Kyle in the boardroom here. How do I put him on speaker? Speaker and.
Just push speaker, yeah.
Phil, can you hear us yet?
Yep.
Okay, um, we're pretty much at the end of our agenda here and we're kind of going back to discuss about the chassis. Have not gotten an answer or call back from Elizabeth specifically yet. So, Carter had a question if it would affect our if it would affect the timeline or whatever if we delay voting on it for a week.
No, I mean, I just have the invoice that you just said due upon receipt.
Okay.
There's no deadline, though.
No, I mean, we're in line.
Sure.
Sure, they're going to send me a another one if I don't pay it. It just said due upon receipt.
Yep.
Okay.
So, this holding off a week, it won't affect the price or the availability of the chassis that it'll still pretty much be ours?
Would would you be able to call and double check that quick or see if see if you can call and like?
If we wait a week, the next bill aren't paid until.
Phil, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think we're going to keep just table it for a week to to make sure, get an auditing opinion and make sure we can doing all that correctly.
If we did it today.
I have a fact that McNote started up in the June twentieth meeting and all the stuff was like approval of purchase. Once you have money available to do so. That's how the motion was was made back then, but if you want to wait a week, I'm kind of sad if I heard anything. Just gonna it'll be a month. It'll be a month before we pay the bill. Which will be closer to the budget limit anyway.
So, back on June twentieth, I I couldn't quite catch all you said. That was in a we approved to pay for this chassis. It once the money was available, is that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And we had an auditing opinion then?
I'm sure we did, but I looked at to see if there was anything that said, you know, about talking to a listener, talking to anybody about it there. It does not state that, so. I mean, if you want to wait to have confirmation, we're that's what we'll do.
Okay.
So, what the record show that it'll be put on the agenda for next week is that your wishes?
That way everybody's on board.
Yeah, that should be fine. All right, thanks, Phil.
So, who's going to contact Elizabeth?
We have we all both Kyle and I have messages entered.
Yeah, um.
Sounds good.
Hopefully, we'll both get a response here yet today, hopefully.
Okay.
So.
I just want to make sure that I wasn't supposed to do anything.
Yep, no worries. Thanks.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you, Phil.
I guess I have one more discussion item yet. Has anybody heard anything about Brammer County and the lawsuit?
There's no division there. Oh, I I talked to the auditor over there several weeks back and no information.
No.
It was like Shelby, absolutely no information until one day, everything was out.
Just curious.
Yep, yeah. Oh, North Dakota is the only big news, like, yeah.
Yeah, that is interesting that they got denied there.
Being that's where it's all going.
Well, it's going to stop at the South Dakota border.
Yeah, it's heading to South. It's starting in North Dakota, but heading to South Dakota. I'm saying that's where it's all being stored is in North Dakota.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, they just have a bottleneck there at the border.
Right.
Anything else to come before the good of Sioux County? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion and second you choose.
It doesn't matter to me.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.